It is seven o'clock. Are we all ready and set to go? Pardon? Oh, okay. Okay, now we're set. All right, everybody's logged on and we're set to go. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And first, I'd like to ask, first of all, welcome everybody here this evening. We have a number of people here for a number of items, fun items on the agenda. And welcome also to those that might be watching later on on YouTube as the video is running. So first, would you please, if you have cellphone devices, please turn them off or on silent mode so they don't disrupt our meeting here? And then also, would you stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, before we approve the agenda, I'm going to make a few, not announcements, but introductions. So I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Patricia Thol, Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, Shannon Bruce, and on the end, we have our city engineer, Paul Hornby with WSB. And then we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, welcome back. And then we have our HR Communications Coordinator, Cassandra Tabor. To my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, Finance Director, Brian Grimm, Community Development Director, David Abel, our city attorney, Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven, and Chief of Police, Paul Falls. We also have somebody from WSB, Eric Swaber, who is with us this evening for our comp plan amendment. So with that, are there any additions to our agenda?
Mayor, I would like to add one item on your special presentations. I'd like to renumber them. The one I'd like to be is 2A, and then we'll have the comp plan approval draft as 2B.
Okay. Okay? Any other changes?
What's the topic?
What's the topic?
Announcement of an award.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented with that change?
Some.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Maliter made the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So first, we will, Mike?
I'm going to have Councilmember Mortenson make this announcement. Councilmember?
All right. Well, it is my great pleasure to announce, on behalf of the Minnesota Women in City Government, the board has chosen this year's winner of the MWCG Leadership Award for the elected official is going to our mayor, Lisa Whelan. She'll be getting this award next week at the conference down in Rochester. And if anybody would like to go, I don't think there's any need to go to or attend the ceremony, but we are very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And it was fun to do the nomination, and it was a great process to see it all come to this point.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very, very honored, very, very honored. Feel very privileged to be able to serve this community. So very, very excited about the opportunity, not just for myself, but for our city. I think it shows that we have not only one great leader, but we have a number of great leaders here on the city council, and I want to give hats off to all of you. So thank you very much, and I'm just honored, very honored.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So now, we go on to our special presentation with Mr. Swaber for the comp plan amendment.
Mayor, city council, thank you for having me back. I'm going to be giving a short 10 to 15-minute presentation, giving the highlights particularly of what the planning commission reviewed at May 22nd, and then be open for any questions or comments that you may have. So first of all, this process has been going on for about 14 months. It's involved a number of individuals, including the members of the steering committee. They met 10 times. We've had two open houses. We've had two updates for the city council. We've been to both the 2016, or we've had information of both the 2016, 17 Trista Days, as well as using my sidewalk, we've seen, had over 3,500 views of this topic. And then at the end of this presentation, we'll be going over the most important meeting involved, which was the planning commission public hearing and their recommendation. So I'm going to go over the key changes from the 2030 land use plan. I'll show you the 2040 land use plan a little while, but the big point is the MUSA really has only changed to add some commercial area. Otherwise, where the growth was depicted in 2030 is the same area where the residential growth is depicted in 2040. The big change is how that growth is addressed. First of all, with the approval of Woodland Cove, that actually took care of most of the forecast growth through 2030. So really, for the majority of the next 10 years, you've already approved the majority of that development. Secondly, we took a look at the different densities. For the residential districts, this is probably the biggest change, is not how much land is guided, but at what densities it is guided. So one of the big changes is that we removed any developable parcels that were zoned to low to medium, which was three units per acre or higher. That might have been the Red Oaks Golf Course subdivision or other subdivision. We could do that in addition to also reducing the residential low density down to 1.15 dwellings per acre. So the lower the density goes, the higher the lot size actually can be. So for the single-family residential, you have a larger range of what you can approve than in the 2030 comprehensive plan. Some of this, or the majority of this was done both because of the amount and the density of the high-density residential that you depicted in your community. This is the exact same area as the 2030 plan. So again, the area hasn't grown. It's what density is expected there. That's expected to be 12 dwelling units or more. The steering committee looked at a number of local residential zoning, or high-density developments, and actually identified that some of the higher-density developments actually come with amenities that are attractive, and actually could usually get architecture that is more attractive. So the higher density came along with that. And then finally, commercial was added to Highway 7. So these are the areas in which the MUSA actually expanded. There's an area here that is expanded into the 2030 MUSA, and then there's two areas, one by Woodland Cove, and then one on the south side of Highway 7, which is in the 2040 MUSA. So again, those are the expansions to your MUSA in this proposal. The other changes that are how you deal with urban reserve, there's an area north of the current MUSA that is removed. In the central area, the area along Wood Edge Road is added in this location, as well as the properties beneath the West Honka Park. And then finally, the areas around St. Bonnie, both on the north and the west, was removed from the urban reserve, and the area along Highway 7 was added. And we'll point out, urban reserve does not say what the eventual development would be. So in this area, this urban reserve could actually become commercial eventually. So just because it says urban reserve doesn't mean it's going to be residential. Just means it's going to be served with sewer water. So this is the 2040 land use map. The MUSA is the same except for these small commercial areas along Highway 7. The other key component of the comprehensive plan is showing what infrastructure is needed through the term. This is just the short term, so probably planned on the next five years. You can see there's quite a few park investments. There's a couple sanitary sewer investments. I will say sanitary sewer investments, that does come with development. So if development in these areas does not occur, then that infrastructure is not needed, but we're planning on that coming in 2030 MUSA. You will notice that there's quite a few surface water management tools. That's not unexpected for a community like yourself, where you have many lakes that you have, and a key lake like Lake Metonka, concentrating on surface water makes a lot of sense. You will note there's only one water supply, the well, or the, sorry, the water tower, within the next five years, there is more water without till 2040.
So short term, is that five years or less?
That's what we're expecting, but why we didn't put it for five years, a lot of these are dependent on development. It's what we think will develop in the next five years, is what we'd suggest you put in your CIP for budgeting purposes, but it's all really dependent on development. The one infrastructure it would take just a minute or two to talk about is the commercial area on the south side of 7. The steering committee originally did not have this area in. When we visited with the city council back in, I believe it was November or early December, we were asked to look at this, and that would be the appropriate time to put her in. We haven't evaluated the infrastructure yet, so to figure out what kind of transportation or utility infrastructure would be needed, you know, we needed to know you wanted to look at it. Well, coming back, what it shows is there's going to be at least a $600,000 lift station needed for that area. To serve the area north of that, the lift station is not needed. So it's due to the distance from Highway 7 that the lift structure is needed. If you were to make a transportation connection back to St. Bonnie, the bridge itself would be about $100, about $1 million. There would probably be almost that much, again, in roadway to connect it. But the other key component is Minnehawke Creek watershed district owns that piece of property, so the likelihood of actually getting the building constructed is pretty low. So we're going to talk about this again in the recommendation here. So after the public hearing, a testimony by quite a few individuals, there were these five recommendations, five recommended changes from the April 18th comprehensive plan draft that you guys have in front of you. First is removal of the commercial property within the 2040 MUSA in south of 7. So that's that property that has the more costly infrastructure. Second, inclusion of the housing chapter revisions that you, as the council reviewed back on May 1st. Third, removing 7250 Halsted Drive from the urban reserve. That was that piece south of the West Honka Park. Fourth, we heard testimony from quite a few residents on Wood Edge Road that they wanted to be removed from the urban reserve. And then finally, there were four properties on the southeast corner of County Road 92 and 110. So this is north of St. Bonnie, but on the east side of County Road 92 that wanted to be returned to the urban reserve. So the planning commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve the draft plan with these five conditions. That is included in your resolution before you. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Eric, just real quick, the urban reserve is not actually a requirement by the Met Council. It's just a designation that the city has put on, put in in the past. So just for clarification.
That is correct. I do have this map that may help this. You have three community designations, agriculture, diversified rural, and emerging suburban edge. The only piece that is expected to have sewer and water is the emerging suburban edge, so that's the only piece that the Met Council really has guidelines on. The urban reserve fell in that diversified rural community designation, and that's completely at the will of the city. There isn't Met Council requirements within that designation.
Another question, pretty hard. On the changes from the draft, there was four properties that wanted, basically if I remember right, it was four properties that wanted to come out of urban reserve and four that wanted to go back in. Is that a fair statement?
There was more than four that wanted to come out. We look at Wood Edge Road. I think there's like a dozen properties on Wood Edge Road. But there was one property owner at this corner that wanted to remain, but there's two small properties here in the corner, and there's one kind of medium-sized property right on the intersection. Both staff and the planning commission thought, if you were going to include the large piece, it makes sense to include the two, the three small pieces which are basically surrounded. But for the other ones that are recommended removal, that's this one here, which you see in the 2030, is rural, and then Wood Edge Road is removed. And I don't remember if that's eight or 12, or probably closer to 12.
Yeah, 12.
So in terms of landmass or size, do they kind of offset?
We're probably removing a little more than we're adding, but if you actually looked at wetlands and develop, you're probably adding more than you're removing, because there's a fairly large wetland in the back of this property, and you get scattered wetlands up in that area. So if you're talking about developable or net use, which, you're probably adding more back in than you're taking out.
Again, it's just a designation, so it doesn't really matter. It's, it can be changed in the future.
Yeah, sure.
And so would we be asking the Met Council, as far as that commercial, excuse me, the commercial property south of 7, where, you know, if you put a road to St. Bonnie, you've got to get the wetlands and the bridge and all that sort of thing? Would we be asking the Met Council to not put the MUSA there?
Correct.
Okay.
So we'd just be asking them to expand the 2030 MUSA in this area and expand the 2040 MUSA in that area?
Yeah, which seems really logical.
You may, just if I can, I have it in my staff report a little bit, but we had a couple of residents in this area come to the public hearing. Most of the questions we got were kind of why there, and why does it stop there? And the reason why is when Woodland Cove develops, there'll be a gravity sewer pipe here that can serve those parcels. If on Oak Road, basically right on the east side, there's a little bit of a ravine, that gravity pipe would not be able to cross to the west. So going any farther to the west would have required a lift station. And the reason why it's in the 2040 MUSA is because Woodland Cove is going to have to develop to get that gravity pipe to the boundary of the property. The two property owners that were there, neither of them spoke for this to change back. They just were questioning why their properties and why not others'.
Sure. How many people came to that meeting?
Probably 20 people in the audience, and probably 12 spoke.
Twenty, twenty. Yeah. And they were, all of them were basically for, in regards, okay, the couple property owners, as Eric just pointed out, regarding on Highway 7, for the changing from rural, I think now they're going to be designated, the zoning is going to be commercial. There were two property owners from that area here. Neither one of them were opposed to it. They were just asking questions. The other people that were here were all in the stage developed area. Okay, there was one other guy I'll tell you about in a second. And they either wanted to go out or come back in, and that's in the recommendation. And then there was one gentleman on 151, just on the south side of 151. He was concerned about the density change, and he felt that the density change might devalue his property, but it probably, we, you can't say that for sure. I mean, you don't know what will happen, so I don't know that there's any basis to say yes, it will be devalued. It went from, it was an issue on density, it was a little tiny bit higher, I think it was up to 3.5 units an acre, and now it's up to three units an acre. Is that correct?
Well, no, it was at, it's at now five as a max, but it's going down.
Okay, that's right. And so he thought because the density was going down, his property value would go down. And that's not necessarily true, because you could always do a PUD, if you wanted to do a higher density. So it's not necessarily that it's going to be devalued. And we couldn't, it was just, it's a small five-acre parcel, I believe it is. You couldn't really take that out of the mix and zone it differently, because then that spot zoning.
Mayor, if I could, the other property, you know, ultimately, he didn't actually make a formal request. He was asking questions and wondering if it was devalued. But what we were talking about was, a lot of times, the home value is actually based on the lot value, and so having a larger lot is more valuable than having smaller lots. So it's not, you know, if he had five dwelling unit per acre density, he's probably not building 600 or 750,000 dollar homes on lots that small. Where if he had smaller lots, maybe in the neighborhood of 1.5 dwelling units per acre, you probably could get homes of that value. So it's not just simply the number of lots, it's the value of lots as well. So it wasn't a one-to-one equation. Oh, you took one and a half units of, you know, say you took 20% of the density possible away from it, doesn't mean his value is elevated 20%. It could be the same. You won't know until the development's approved, and the market tells what those lots are.
Right. I think that was pretty much the comments.
That's my reflection.
Any other questions or comments? Because I have a number of quick comments, hopefully. Eric, just, I just want to make sure, so on page 2-4, under comprehensive plan, you talk about estimated market value. Do you mean median estimated market value? Do you mean median market value? I mean, what does this mean, estimated market value, or average market value?
Yep. Mr. Abel forwarded your question.
Thank you.
Beforehand, so I prepared this slide to try to go through it. So on 2.4, the median single-family residential value is $387,000. That's down from a couple of years previously, when it was up as high as 450. But the median value in 2014 was $387,000 for the house. So that's not the average. That's maybe the cheapest to the most expensive of the ones.
In the median. And so, Mr. Swaber, the only comment I have is it should say median then. Just check on that, because I wanted to clarify the median. So then, I just want to talk a little bit about some of the surface water, and I won't bore you, but, so comment I have is Little Long Lake in here, repeatedly, multiple times states poor water quality. Now, Little Long Lake is impaired, but it's impaired for mercury, but it does not have poor water quality. It actually has very good water quality. So the fact that it's listed under the impairment is fine, but on numerous occasions, it's listed as having poor water quality, and I think that needs to be changed. And then also, on a couple of the other water bodies, I got the public ditch question answered. Thank you. On the other water bodies, for instance, it says Whale Tail, north and south, are listed as impaired. Could you double-check that? I believe just the South Bay is impaired.
We will check that.
Okay. And then I just mentioned a couple other minor things to Mr. Abel. One quick question. Oh, and then also on a map, if you could double-check this, it is on the MLCCS coverage figure 13, and it shows a Hunter's Crest as being in green, and that says undeveloped, so it should be gray. Okay, so just...
Yep, if I could just briefly, thank you, Mayor. If I could just briefly, I did talk to our surface water people, and regarding Little Long Lake, they will change that from poor water quality to impaired.
No, it's good water quality.
We just need to clarify that it's impaired due to mercury.
Correct.
And it is good water quality.
And it is listed as impaired due to mercury, but I didn't want it, because it really is good water quality, and I don't want us to be on the hook to make better, to make it better water quality when it's already good.
Right. And then regarding the map, that map is from another source. It was based on aerial photos from 2009, but we have the ability to correct that for Hunter's Crest, and we will.
Okay. And then just real quick, on section 2, page 8, we're talking about surface water. Number four, it talks about Serenity Hills development, and it says that some of these issues will be addressed with the Serenity Hills development to be completed in 2017. We need to delete that to be completed in 17? So those are the, mean, the comments I had.
Mayor, thank you. Yes, we will make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
And if you will please add that to the motion as a resolution, but we will make those changes.
Okay. Other than that, I didn't have any questions or comments, other than I think the steering committee did an excellent job with your help and staff's help. I know staff has put a lot of time into it as well. Thank you very much. I know that we can be assured that this is going to be a good plan and that it will pass. Anybody else?
I just have a question about the employment opportunities. I don't know what page it's on, but the grid where it...
Said 70 will be added.
So it's in 2010, I think it's 665, 2020, it'll be 720, 2030, 730, 2040, 740. We're only adding 10 jobs a year. I know we don't have a lot of commercial, but of the ones that are, I guess, the biggest jump is 2010 to 2020, where it goes from 665 to 720. Do we know, what are we, what jobs are we seeing that are going to be added there? Or what industries?
School, city? Those are the two big employers.
Mayor. I can explain a little bit where that information comes from, more than what industries it will be. That information came from the Met Council and their forecasts that they provide us. They have a pretty extensive model when they get to their households and their population, and how much of growth the region, et cetera. When it comes to employment, all they do is basically look at your old plan and kind of carry that forward. So that probably does not, well, the Met Council forecast does not represent what growth with the new areas on County Road 7 are planned. Regarding what industries, that is what you, as a city, will have the most effect on when you review your zoning ordinance following the adoption of your comprehensive plan, and you have the ability to, you know, make changes or adopt zoning classifications that help you attract the industries that you're looking for. But comprehensive plan is kind of a 30,000-foot view. It just talks about development. It doesn't get into the zoning or subdivision level of individual buildings, who's the users. If that helps.
So it's basically just a guess.
Well, tie into with Mr. Abel, when we've talked before about a, what do you call it, a marketing survey, or when we have someone come and...
Market research.
Yeah, market research, as far as what type of companies would want to come here. And so then that could steer what the jobs are.
Mayor and the council, the role of the comprehensive plan when it comes to the commercial and/or industrial is to ensure that your local infrastructure is planning for that growth. So, you know, that there's sufficient road capacity, which in this case, unfortunately, there isn't, but everybody knows that on highways and up. Is there sufficient sewer water capacity to supply those needs? And that's, if you implement the comprehensive plan, you will be able to plan for quite a wide variety of industrial classifications. Your zoning, marketing, and economic development will help you actually get something in interest that you're looking for, but that's beyond the scope of the...
Okay, got it, yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else otherwise?
I don't, I don't have any questions here, but I did make some, I met with Mr. Abel today. We made a number of changes to the comp plan, just cleaning up some things and...
Some language and some...
Language and numbers and, but quite a few things, so just wanted to make note of that. So there are things that have been changed since the plan has been presented to us. And I also have, would now be a time to talk about other things other than land use in the comp plan?
And the whole comp plan, we have to, yeah, so anything in the comp plan.
Okay. I would like to, I think I've expressed concern in the past on, about the Met Council's propensity to overmate population growth. And in the comp plan, we make, we set goals based on those numbers that they've given us. And in the comp plan, we make, we set goals based on those numbers that they've given us. And I took the redlined numbers from the two thousand thirty plan that we were given, and I just graph them, and I'm just going to pass these out, so you can each have one. I think it's important to make a note in our comp plan, and I don't know where that would be, if it's in just a narrative in the front, or if it's in the financial section, but I think we need, I'm proposing a disclaimer in response to the historically overprojected growth by the Met Council. And because we set our goals on those numbers, I think it's important that we acknowledge that the Met Council has historically overprojected those numbers. And as you can see from the graph, if you look at the trend line down below, we have actuals, there's projected two thousand thirty comp plan numbers that were adjusted downward because they overprojected so much. You can see where that trend line goes, and if we continue growing at the same rate that we're growing, that trend line comes way below where they're projecting our growth in two thousand forty. So I've written some language I'd like to have Mr. Beatty take a look at it, to put a disclaimer in, just as a response to the Met Council, so that it's acknowledging that we're aware that these numbers have historically been overestimated. I think they're overestimated again, and I think we need to acknowledge that and need to just have a caveat in there that we will estimate these numbers realistically as we go forward and change the plan accordingly. Because I, I think these numbers are way overestimated. And I think a disclaimer is just something to, to let people know that we're aware of it and that we intend to monitor those numbers realistically as they go forward.
So, Mr. Weber, maybe you could, before Mr. Beatty weighs in, could you tell us the estimate, these, these numbers at the Met Council, their estimated population growth, their estim, their, their guesses, I mean, for more, more or less. But what, what significance do these have for our plan and/or for our growth?
Mayor, thank you for that, and Councilmember Bruce, thank you. I, I think I can address a number of these. I think you, Councilmember Bruce, you make a very good observation. I would say that it may be that where the growth actually ends up might be somewhere between your line and maybe the Met Council's prediction. Just to acknowledge that between two thousand six and two thousand fourteen, you know, the recession really dropped. There were market conditions that affected, from the entire nation, that affected growth here. But you will, you will know, I think the Met Council would not, would not challenge your first assertion that they have historically overestimated their comp. I mean, that's, that's the fact with the, the bar in orange that you showed. But the Met Council looks at basically the seven county metropolitan rings. And they have historically, with the exception of the Great Recession, been pretty good at the entire seven county metro area's growth. They've been very poor trying to get down to community by community. I don't, to that point, we do anticipate that in our comprehensive plan. That's why we're choosing terms like short term, medium term, long term, and particularly when we try to identify that many of these investments don't need to be made if there isn't development. So when we provided our recommendations, you know, we put it in the short term, and if the growth that we think will take five years to happen won't happen for ten years, then short term just becomes a ten year term. That's just to help you with, you know, help Mr. Hornby with his infrastructure planning, that we're not making, you know, constructing things that are not needed, but at the same time, helping the city financial department know if growth does occur at that rate that you're preparing your comprehensive plan. So I, I don't, I think your comment is very on the mark. We could certainly look at adding language. I think it meets the intent to plan already, so adding that should, should be no problem. We didn't put even years or even timeframes when we looked at the investment, because this is kind of the first phase of growth, and then the second phase of growth. If it takes longer, then these things just move out. Just the same, if growth occurs faster, well, then short term is getting shorter, medium, you know, and that can vary all the way through. So our tie really is when we're looking at this map, the two thousand forty map, we've identified the infrastructure that's necessary for that map to develop. If that map takes thirty years to develop instead of twenty years, well, then it's your staff that will be providing recommendations on what elements can be delayed due to the growth that doesn't occur. So I don't, I don't think adding language stating that forecasts are, even though they could be scientifically based, are not always what happens. And that the city is going to make wise decisions on where to develop, what infrastructure to put in, based on the actual development, history and growth that occurs in this area. I, I don't think the Met Council would have any issue with that.
So what are you proposing?
I'm, this language here, I propose, it's right here.
The top paragraph.
The top paragraph.
Menetrista's comp plan and implementation strategies herein are based upon Metropolitan Council forecasts that have historically predicted higher population and household growth than has actually occurred in Menetrista. The city will evaluate population and household growth on a continuing basis and may adjust relevant plans accordingly going forward.
Can I just make one quick comment? We a hundred percent did that with the water treatment plants. We did that just rationally at a council level. We said, we're not going to use the hundred and sixty units that the Met Council had, we used seventy-five. So we just did that, we know our city best, obviously, and so we didn't rely on estimates that, I know even our one engineering firm that didn't end up building it wanted us to use as far as the hundred and sixty.
My question is, is, so let's say we don't have this language in there. I mean, let's just say, does this affect our, I mean, these are just projections, and so we don't have to meet these projections. Is that, I mean, what are you, what are you, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Right, and I, I don't think this language is going to change anything that we do or that we say. It's, it's just something, I think it sends a message to the Met Council that we're aware that these numbers are overprojected, and I think it also lets our constituents know that we know these numbers are probably high, and it just is a way of addressing that awareness and letting people know that we're aware of it.
Well, just so I can, might add, I mean, when they came up with this, these numbers a couple of years ago when they went through that process, they asked us for our comment. You know, they, they went out and asked, you know, so that would have been the appropriate time, you know, when they're making their adjustments to, you know, specifically talk about the numbers. We just, as you projected and pointed out, they went up, and then they dialed it back to what they originally were. Our comment was, you know, we were okay with that, we agreed that they should have dialed it back, was, was the comment back to the Met Council. So they did, I mean, in fairness, they asked the city for a comment on, on this number that they came up with.
Okay, well, obviously it wasn't here when they did that.
Sure, that's why, that's why I wanted to point it out, correct, yep, yep.
My only concern, and I could be wrong, but when it says, the city will evaluate population and household growth on a continuing basis and may adjust relevant plans accordingly going forward, my concern is if that plan is the comprehensive plan, then we're doing comprehensive plan amendments, which is costly.
I, but it's at our discretion, it's at the city's discretion, we would vote on it.
Mayor, if I could, I think you could do what Councilmember Bruce is doing without amending the comprehensive plan, again, because of the way we set it up. It says short term. The part of the comprehensive plan that is implementing is your CIP. That changes every year, and you don't have to do a comprehensive plan amendment, just approve the next year's CIP, that's, that's understood. So if what is meant by Councilmember Bruce, that we're not going to make investments in infrastructure, that the.
Well, I think that's a given, right.
Doesn't necessitate. I think you, you have the ability to do that with, with your capital improvement plan. Mayor, to your point, i- if, if it's removing infrastructure item, item to the plan, that would require a comprehensive plan. But just simply adjusting the timeframe in your, in your capital improvement plan should not require a comprehensive plan.
I just don't want it to read that we will be adjusting our comp plan, because that can get costly.
No, that's not the intent.
So then the next question is, we would not, if we make this, this comment at the top, then my assumption is we wouldn't make or cross out these numbers that are on here? We would leave the Met Council's numbers here?
Oh, I just.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, okay.
I just basing this in from the redlined version that we had.
Okay.
Just as, as an example to show you where the numbers were.
And then having some kind of language saying that we recognize that these numbers may be high or whatever, and that we will evaluate the population.
Yeah, and, and I'm open to other language if it, if it needs to be massaged in any way.
Mayor and council, I guess I'd like to hear from the city attorney, but maybe, maybe changing the word plan to capital improvement program or something like that, maybe more.
Yeah, I am a little concerned about using the word plan.
Or you could change it to goals.
Let's see what, Ron?
If you change goals, you're still changing.
Well, Mayor and council, I'm just looking at this for the first time. I think Mr. Weber's explanation was very comprehensive, was very good. I think the city is going to do this regardless of whether we say anything in the comp plan, because that's what we do. It's a plan. We evaluate it on an ongoing basis and respond to the reality as it unfolds. If development occurs more quickly, then we'll implement things more quickly. If, as Mr. Weber says, it takes longer to get there, then we're going to respond accordingly and not over, or not prematurely develop.
Right.
I, I think this, you know, if you, if you put language in, this language or some version of language, I don't know, that it's harmful, but I, again, I think it's something that is implicit in what we're going to do and how we're going to implement the plan anyway.
Right. I think we should, we can make a public statement that we do think these numbers are a bit high and that we're going to make an adjustment. But it, since it doesn't force us to do these numbers, that's what I was getting at. I want to make sure that it doesn't. So maybe just leaving it out and, and acknowledging that, yeah, we think these numbers are a bit high. Would that.
Mayor and city council, maybe if I could ask another question of the attorney. Maybe we can put something along that lines in one of the whereas's of the resolution?
Yeah. Mayor and council, I think that's a good approach. I mean, I don't think there's any harm in, in recognizing that these are projections, and therefore by their nature, they're subject to being low or high. And, and I think that's a very good suggestion if we simply want to indicate that. But again, I think how we implement this is going to be the, a reality-based look at things as they actually develop.
That would be a good, good idea.
Yeah, I think it would be fine to make it part of the resolution.
On a, on a, I was going to say on a different topic, but not exactly. On page one dash two of the comprehensive plan, where it talks about households, and there's a grid there, as the Met Council is reviewing the projections for the seven county metro area, they're looking for what cities have the capacity for growth. And if you look at that chart, you know, Mound is basically landlocked. They, you know, what's buildable has been built. Same with Saint Bonnie, they're landlocked, so their capacity for growth is pretty slim. And then look at the line for Menetrista. It just, it goes straight up, well, not straight up, but it goes up at a greater rate than our, our neighbors or who they, who they have compared us against, and we've got a lot of land that isn't developed yet. So as far as the Musa, it's us or them or us together identifying of this growth, where do we see it, how do we zone it? And, and then as I think you were saying, you know, we meet those numbers when we get to, or those projections when we get there, but they can't force us to, you know, build that many houses up in.
Mayor and city council, yes, they can't force us to build those houses. What they can require of us is to identify what infrastructure and city policies and ordinances are needed when that development happens, but not the time for it.
Okay. Any, anything else? So, Ms. Bruce here, so if we do the resolution, so it'd be approving or making a motion to approve resolution number eighty-seven dash seventeen, which is approving the draft two thousand forty comprehensive plan with changes recommended by the Planning Commission, that was in our packet, and the additional comments here tonight, and adding under the resolution, whereas the city council acknowledges projected growth in population by the Met Council has been historically high, the city will evaluate its population and growth on a continuing basis. Would that, does that meet the?
Yeah, I don't think that the, as you stated it, Mayor, the, what you left out was the and may adjust relevant plans accordingly going forward. I think that that's just, we'll evaluate the population and household growth on a continuing basis that says it. You don't need that additional part, so I would agree with that.
And, and that's fine, because ultimately that's what it's going to be based on, is.
Right, exactly.
Reality.
Okay. Okay. Did our minute taker get that? Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments or additions? So is there a motion to that effect, or do I need to repeat it again?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce to approve resolution eighty-seven dash seventeen with all those changes as identified and stated. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So this will go out to numerous organizations, and they will have six months to comment on it, after which it will come back to us, and we will review it once again. And then it will go out to the Met Council, at which time they will have up to six months or twelve months? Six months to review?
They actually get four months, they get a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, four months to review it, so it's going to be a while. So, all right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Next, we have persons to be heard, and we have nobody signed up. So we will move on to our consent agenda items. Consent agenda items, A, approving our claims, resolution number eighty-eight dash seventeen. Number B is resolution eighty-nine seventeen, approve our variance for nine sixty-five Maple Crest Lane. And C is a resolution ninety dash one seven, approve our partial assignment of master development agreement, Woodland Cove Phase Three. And D is a resolution number ninety-one dash seventeen, approve the two thousand seventeen standard specifications and detail plates. Any questions, anything that needs to be removed? If not, then I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thole and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to public hearings, of which we have none. And then we'll move on to our business items. So first up is Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition Final Plaid. Mr. Abel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you see on your agenda, there is actually three items related to this Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition, so I'm going to talk in general about all of them. We will need three separate motions, there's three separate resolutions for you to act on this evening. But given that they're all basically tied to each other, I'll just talk in general. So we're talking about what is the farthest northern part of the Woodland Cove development, the 500 acres, this is the peninsula piece and the connection of Woodland Cove Parkway up to Kings Point Road, that's one of the main thoroughfares that cuts through the Woodland Cove development. So that map that's on your screen up there is the northern piece, the section that is being platted, the Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition. This technically would be the fourth phase of the Woodland Cove development, but it's the second lake addition for Woodland Cove LLC or the second addition that's a non-Madamy phase. So this is not a Madamy phase that's being developed right now. There are 26 total lots being proposed. There is, as we've done with recent phases, there's always some slight adjustments with each phase that comes in, they get more dialed down in detail and what the market's demanding at the time of that final phase. So what they've done right now, given the market, is they've reduced the peninsula, they've taken three lots off of the peninsula, so it's going from ten lots to seven. They've added those three lots from the peninsula to the non-lake lots and made that adjustment. As part of that, of course, one of your items on your agenda is the annual dock license, which usually we just routinely approve those because there's not changes made, but given this shift in the lots, they wanted to shift around some of those BSUs as they're referred to or boat storage units. So the peninsula will now have 28 BSUs with eight lots. And two of those BSUs have been moved within the channel of the development. So as the council will recall, what we do with each phase when it comes in is we refer to our master development agreement. As you recall, we had visions and adjustments that were allowed for this development. So we review the master development agreement, we review the preliminary plat. As long as those things are consistent, staff does recommend that the council approve these final plats as they come forward. So again, you have three items before you this evening, the first being the final plat of Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition. The second item is that the city council entered into a subdivision agreement, so this is another level of an agreement, this is a subdivision agreement specific to this phase within the development. Again, a general practice that we do with any of our new subdivisions that come in, that puts forth the securities and obligations of the developer and what's expected of them to ensure that they're going to construct these public improvements as they've called out. And then that third item that's listed there again is your annual dock license with those slight adjustments that have been made to the BSUs. I will note that the applicants have been through the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District. Mr. Mahler's kept a surprise to that as he's now our sitting member of that board. So they've been through that step, they've been through our planning commission with the annual dock license, was recommended approval of it. So we have a resolution before you recommending approval of that annual dock license with the adjustments that are made. Paul Robinson is in the audience if you have any specific questions of him and I'm also available, but otherwise recommending approval of all three resolutions that are in your packet. One item I want to note, Madam Mayor, before we get much further, there's one change that needs to be made to the final plat resolution. One of the conditions, we did agree upon with the applicant that they have one year to file this final plat as opposed to the standard 120 days. Just not knowing from a timing standpoint when they'll get this going. A year gives them some more flexibility, that is something we've done before with other plats. It's just a standard practice to do the 100 days because that's what the state statute is. But you as a council have the ability to extend that. As you recall, we've actually extended timelines for filing of final plats before. So the actual resolution that would be signed tonight has already had that change noted if it is approved and signed, just wanted to make that note known to you here this evening.
Okay. Mr. Abel, this is a little bit of a detailed question. So now there are 28 boat slips, it's just that the location of two or three of them changed?
Correct, yeah, they took two off of the peninsula and moved them into the Cove.
Yep, and so, again, detailed, so does that mean that there are 28 properties each that have one boat slip? Or how are they allocated or do we not know that at this point?
I do not know that, but Mr. Robinson can address that for you.
So, Mayor and council members, Paul Robinson here representing Woodland Cove LLC. Yeah, the dock thing gets kind of complicated, but it is all laid out, it has been approved, but there's 117 total slips. And so those, that has not changed. So previously there were 30 allocated to the peninsula to 10 lots. And so we're allocating 28 to the peninsula for seven lots and then moving those two into the channel area. So the total's still 117. Does that mean? And so when you're looking, and so actually if it increased anything, it increased the ability for two of the, there's 85 lots in the Cove total. So two that couldn't get a dock, possibly could get a dock now depending on how we allocate them. One of those channel lots is that we're going to be allocating, if it's approved tonight, to one of the residents in the channel, so it doesn't add another user. Does that make sense? Well, actually we took three away from the peninsula, so we're at a net probably, I don't know, net users were down to one or two. I'm probably confused you more there.
But so you said
I had like a nice little, like, wait, oh, here we go.
So you're, you said, what I heard you say, I could be wrong, was 28 slips for seven lots, so, but that doesn't mean that
So each gets four.
They do. So they get a four water craft?
Right, so it's very much like a regular lake lot. So these peninsula lots, they all have, 220 feet is the smallest lakeshore on one of those peninsula lots. So if you were, if you owned a lot on the lake and you had 220 feet, you'd get up to eight slips. If you wanted, you could try to petition for one for 50. So, no, you'd get four, over four, you'd get four.
You'd get four, you can't get more than four.
Right. But you could get more than four if you had 300 feet of a lakeshore. I mean, if you have, if you have over 200.
Then you get into a marina, I think, anyway. Yeah, whatever.
The L C D rules are
Yeah, they're
Tangly.
I know.
So, but so the four, I mean, if you think of a typical lakeshore that you serve, I mean, it's not unusual to see a ski boat and a pontoon boat for two jet skis, boat and four.
So I'm just going to make a couple comments. I like, I like the seven lots. Way, way, way back when, you might not recall, but I do. When you were proposing 10 lots out there, I'm like, gee whiz. So I like the seven lots a lot. I think it'll be fabulous with the seven versus the 10. I did talk to staff today about the private road, however, typically, typically, I'm not in favor of private roads. However, with the topography out there and with all of the constraints and also the trees and all of the damage it would do if they had to build this to city standards, I do think this is a better alternative. So I'm actually on board with that. I think, and I know you'll do a fabulous job too, preserving those trees. I think that's why the lots are what they are. So I think that's great. Yeah, this has been a while, so we'll see what it looks like when it's done. So any other comments or questions, Mr.? Okay, otherwise, so there's three approvals, we can take them one at a time. It's a resolution number ninety-two dash seventeen to approve the final plat with the addition of extending the filing date to one year.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And the next resolution is number ninety-three dash seventeen and it's approving the subdivision agreement.
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Thol. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And the next one is resolution ninety-four dash seventeen, approving the amendment to the annual dock license for second edition final plat.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. That's it, thank you.
I was just going to say one thing that came up, we were talking about, you know, the next phase or the phase of being developed by Madamy, which is actually true, but the actual builder in there now is M.I.
It's going to be M.I.
And so people are confused, like, they hear Madamy and they're wondering, wow, okay, Madamy, yeah.
I thought Madamy's sold, though.
Madamy still actually is kind of, like, when Phase Three is coming, probably in another month, maybe two weeks to a month here to the city. For, and Madamy's going to be developing it for M.I.
M.I. is going to be the
Finish lots.
Yeah. Aren't there some Caltech lot, CalAtlantic lots in there as well?
Not at the Cove, not at the Cove.
Oh, not at the Cove, no, I'm talking elsewhere.
In their, in their, in their deal, yes, CalAtlantic bought some of Madamy's.
Okay.
Home sales.
So it's not Madamy on the Cove, who is it?
Pardon?
So it's not Madamy on the Cove?
It's, so, yeah, it's going to be, it's M.I. homes, M slash I homes. And they have two models out there right now.
But for this addition that we're talking about, that's the Cove, it's completely different.
And this addition, actually, we have David Weekly homes for the off lots and now we have Gania homes, Gania's in the process of building two right now.
Okay, so you, the David Weekly homes are the ones on the cul-de-sac, obviously. And so the new ones that you were just plating, those are going to be Gania homes?
Right.
Okay.
And, well, there's, there could be a mix, but the ones that we have existing that are off lake, those are primarily Gania now.
Okay.
And since that was your last, two of the, two of the three that David Weekly had lots, they have purchase agreements on, so if they're getting full.
Oh, are they getting full then?
Yeah, well, they're getting, they're selling off of their inventory.
Okay.
And if you have any Gania questions, you can ask Jeff.
Okay, yeah. And then how many homes, you have three or four that are now current, Jeff? You have three or four homes that are currently being built on the channel?
Yes, yes. So there's two in the Artisan Home Tour that are right.
Yes, right.
And one is sold, that's the sold, and then one is unsold.
Okay, what dates are the Artisan Home Tours?
That starts Friday.
Okay. So if you want to see a nice house.
Should have music or something.
All right, good luck, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to Red Oak View Concept Plan. Again, Mr. Abel, do you want to start out?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, not anything new to you about what we do when we review a sketch plan, that is the initial presentation of an applicant's intention and serves as a basis for them to decide whether they want to move forward to the next steps in our preliminary plat application. You know, again, the purpose is to allow for our Parks Commission, Planning Commission, and U.S. City Council the opportunity to give non-abiding feedback to an applicant when they're looking to develop a piece of their property. So the property we're looking at is 1030 County Road 19. We, as you may recall, Pam gave her update from the Parks Commission meeting, so you guys are probably a little bit aware of the site and what the Parks Commission recommended, but this is located up just south of the Red Oak Development. The property's highlighted in red there on your screen. The site is about 4.7 acres. The current zoning is R2, low medium density. The current density requirements is a minimum of two units per acre and a maximum of 3.5 units per acre. Our current comp plan has it guided at three units per acre to a maximum of five units per acre. So here is the proposed layout. There are 14 villa-style lots that are being proposed. You can see the access off of County Road 110. And then as it, that end here to the southern property with anticipation that someday that property of the south would likely develop. You can see here there'd be a temporary cul-de-sac from a public safety standpoint to allow for vehicles to turn around. And as I said, when and if the property of the south were to ever develop, that could be removed and the street could go all the way on through the site. So again, as I mentioned, the applicant will talk more about this, but it's a villa-style neighborhood, looking at 3,000 to 3,600 square feet. Sounds like mostly, at one level, there's potential to have some walkout abilities. There may be some basements with some of these, but again, I'll let the applicant talk more about that. As I mentioned to you earlier and as Pam talked about, the Parks Commission did take a look at this. Their recommendation was the cash and move of land. The Planning Commission did look at this as well. There, one of the concerns they had or what they wanted the applicant to look at was the hardcover and make sure that it was going to be compliant with the hardcover regulations. The other big thing they were talking about was keeping in mind the property to the south and even further south and how that might develop in the future. Somewhat of looking at ghost plating, if you will. How would this proposed road come through? Where would that connect down to Grandview? As you can see from the comments from the county, it felt, you know, they are completely happy with the intersection as proposed. But that's another issue to talk with the county. But their big concern is, you know, taking a look at this as a whole and how that whole area might develop and how that's going to connect down to Grandview, which the applicant was willing to do with the Planning Commission and take a look at as they look at this site further. So with that, I don't know, Mayor, I know you were at the Planning Commission meeting. If there's anything else you want to add in terms of their discussions or comments, those were the two big takeaways that I got from the meeting minutes and notes. Otherwise, I'm certainly available for questions. And as Paul Robinson introduced, Jeff Martino, he is in the crowd this evening, the applicant looking to do this development.
I think that's pretty much it, I can answer questions later if need be. So we'll have the applicant come forward and Mr. Abel, on that slide where it showed the lots, it's, what does that say up above lot number three? Is that a road name?
This right here?
Yeah.
Those, that's just like legal description numbers, those would be the back of the lots in Red Oak.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Martino, I'm a real estate agent in the western suburbs and I run a small residential land development company. Before we get started here, I wanted to request if I could pass around a sketch plan that I have done since I had an opportunity to meet a little bit further with staff and Mayor and some ideas that I worked on this week. And I don't know if I have enough copies, but I think I do.
Sure.
Is it appropriate for me to just pass it along?
Yeah. Yeah, just so council knows, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Martino and staff and we talked about his proposal and so maybe some of this is what we talked about.
First of all, I'm really excited about this property. Obviously, I've owned this for a number of years, I live on North Shore Drive. So my, this piece of property became a pet project of mine. Unfortunately, we lost the golf course that was adjacent to it and that's no disrespectful, what's going in there, but the, my vision of this economically, physically, and the dynamics of this piece of property changed with the development of Red Oak. I do a lot of work with a major builder that, I'm not going to mention any names, but it's obvious. I have done numerous projects in the past with this builder. I anticipate to do this project with that builder also, but have not formally completed that. But my vision here is villa homes. It's, and by the drawing that I passed around, I've made some changes so that, and I know there's additional work that needs to be done in that, but my intent is to develop a park that's on the west side of this property, behind the two lots, eight and nine, seven, eight and nine. It allows for a number of different things. Number one, I would, I'd propose improvements and improvements that would be more conducive of the type of person that I believe would be living in this neighborhood. Fire pits, benches, some gathering areas. I'm proposing that I put a fountain in the park or in the pond in that outlot and irrigate and just make that aesthetically appealing. I have not approached I have not approached the developer, CalAtlantic, of Red Oak, I have not approached the neighbor to the south. My idea is to put a Batuna's Trail in, uh, that'll allow us to eventually get to the park that is known as Saga Hill Park, or Saga...
Woods of Saga Hill.
Woods of Saga Hill. These villa homes would be, um, small jewel boxes, they, we'd, um, uh, kind of focus our attention on people that are empty nesters, um, uh, people that live six to eight months in, in the Twin Cities and winter somewhere else. Uh, we also, it isn't gonna be a fifty-five community, um, but, um, I would, you know, I've, I'm doing another project in Minnetaka, and it just seems as if, um, that, uh, neighborhood is, has gravitated to empty nesters. But the minute you start to think about that, we have two younger families coming by in the, in the neighborhood, so, um, but our, but our intent is to do, um, uh, very well-built, uh, well-designed, aesthetically appealing, uh, three-car garage, uh, capabilities on these homes, and my intent also, 'cause whether or not this, whatever this site gets developed, there's a substantial amount of tree removal. And for twelve years, every year, I've come into the city and I have pulled a burning fir bud, and I have harvested the dead trees and encouraged these trees that are on this property to grow, I have not clear-cut it, I have not, um, preserved it, 'cause I didn't know what it was gonna be like, but obviously, the, there'll be a substantial amount of trees that are removed. My intent is numerous, number one, I wanna do everything I can to keep the wooded buffer between, uh, Red Oak, existing new Red Oak Development and this property, and number two, I'm emphatic that all my required tree replacement that I'm, uh, that is my obligation will be done on this site, I will, I re, I will literally put those houses in there, and then I will reforest, um, my responsibilities to this neighborhood, I'm not gonna go outside of it. Actually, after talking to, and had a very fruitful meeting with, uh, staff and the mayor, um, I like the idea of an outlot, I like the idea of it. It allows me to really focus attention on reforestation on the west side of this, which is the, have the heaviest wooded area, so, um, um, I am gonna approach the, um, the homeowner to the south, I am gonna approach CalAtlantic, but I haven't done so at this time, but my intent is to do that. If I don't, uh, uh, get anywhere with that, my hope is that the, the council looks at this as a trail, then maybe I, at the end of the, uh, the trail drawing there, I put a little circle in, and so people can at least turn around, uh, when they're going for their walks, and eventually that it is dedicated towards, um, um, being added onto it when eventually the develop, the property's developed to the south.
Great, um, yeah, the trail, and if, if you guys are familiar, I don't know if the rest of the council's familiar, if we have an aerial, but, um, if or when the property to the south were ever to develop, this trail as he's showing, if that continued south, would then head right into the woods of Saga Hill Park, and then if you know the area at all, Mr. Malater, um, you can actually go down Grandview just a short distance, and then there's a trail going down to Minneapolis Avenue, and then...
Right from my house.
Yeah, and then Minneapolis Avenue connects via a trail to Bayside Lane, and then that connects to a trail over to Jennings Cove. So it all is, it would all interconnect via a trail, a walking trail, and that would be great, that'd, I think, be a really big bonus for the city. Uh, the other thing is, if it goes west, um, and goes through, uh, down to the Red Oak Development, that would also be a benefit for the Red Oak Development as well as for these people here, but, um, so I like, I really like the trail concept and also the open space. Uh, one of the things I'd like to ask is that you, I know you'll work at it, but I'd really like to see if we can't keep the buffer trees on the, um, west and north side, and eat as many as you can on the south side, too, so...
My intent is to, as best I can keep this, and now, on the, on the north side, um, this side right here...
Right.
We're working, I'm working with my engineer to, um, stagger that, there'll be walkouts, uh, those all along the, the north side, the the right side of the road as you're driving into the new, uh, road will be walkouts. The homes on the left side of the road will not be walkouts, um, but my intent is, and that's why I've asked for, um, twenty-five-foot front yard setback, so I can keep these as far forward as I possibly can. These won't be monster homes, they'll be really nicely appointed homes that are very well-designed. Um, and then on the, the right side, or the lots that, uh, walkout step back up to, um, Red Oak, um, we've, we're looking at grading so that we can adhere to the responsibilities of getting to that pond area on the west side, that's an engineering question, and also doing some boulder retaining, lots of transitions down, that allows us to maximize that border of trees adjoining those properties. So I'll work with staff on that, obviously, um, um, my intent is, um, um, you know, and I think, um, we've, in our brief meeting, um, I am more than happy to work within what the city guidelines are. My intent passionately, passionately is to reforest on the site.
One of the issues that we're running into is, um, because of the density requirements for this lot, he could either come in under a PUD, Planned Unit Development, or he could come in with a whole bunch of variances. And it's really not a good idea, so what we talked about is a PUD concept would be better because then we can get something in return for, for granting the variances, if you will, then they won't be variances, they'll come in, so the front yard setback, for instance, the twenty-five feet versus the thirty-five feet, would be allowed under the PUD ordinance versus, um, and then it could save trees, and we could get some other amenities such as the trail. Uh, this little, um, open space would be HOA, but nonetheless, um, so it wouldn't be at the city's expense, but yet it would be an amenity for the, uh, neighborhood, too. So we, we were talking about different amenities that the city would get, and as a whole, as a community, uh, versus doing a bunch of variances.
There's a couple of comments, and I also wanna piggyback on that in the conversation. Um, as much as I'm passionate about the tree replacement on, being on site, I, um, a number of the variances that I, that we looked at that I felt concerned with, uh, would be satisfied with townhomes, and I am passionately against that. I, I, I can't do, um, expensive single-family homes on this site with, um, just the dynamics of what's going on around that. Kind of surrounded by, um, higher, much higher density homes with Red Oak and County Road nineteen, so I'm kind of quartiled in there. But I just don't feel that I wanna do side-by-side townhomes, and I think I've been pretty emphatic about that, you know? You just kind of remove the, the sideyard setbacks on two units by putting them together, obviously, you create a townhome asset. And I just hope that with staff and council that you look at that and go, you know, embrace the, the villa home concept. And, um, and then on, um, the, the park trail system, I actually, the more I thought about the park trail system, the more I thought that park trail system really wouldn't, um, necessarily be, um, a disadvantage to, um, CalAtlantic if I, uh, when I go to CalAtlantic, they already have their lots, and why would I, why would they embrace, hey, sure, we're gonna walk by two of your homes? Well, they, there's, there's a case of, would you rather have us walk by two of your homes, or virtually across the backyard of three or four? Um, because that would be, uh, that's my first sales pitch to them, my second is that if it was, if there were people that were in that Red Oak neighborhood, and eventually the county did some type of a trail system on that County Road nineteen, uh, that, that would funnel some of that, that activity from that neighborhood to the Saga Hill Park that's in Orno, uh, or the other park system that's, um, uh, but talk, I think, Talk of the Road, without funneling it through the Grandview, Grandview Road area or the other, uh, single-family neighborhoods, Grandview, Minneapolis Avenue, so, I think there's a lot of benefits the more and more I looked at that trail system. And I think there's benefits of it going through Red Oak, it makes the best sense, so it's gonna be the first shot I take.
Mr. Martino, as villa homes, uh, would there be an association that took care of all of the yards? Or would the individual homeowners be responsible for taking care of their own yards?
I'm proposing public street, public, uh, street, all, um, uh, upkeep to, uh, uh, driveways and sidewalks would be dealt with in an association. Lawn care, irrigation, public spaces, the park area that I've, I've had the concept on, would be an association park with a, with the public rights of the use of the trail.
Questions? So this is a time to kind of give some feedback and, um, let the developer know what direction you'd like him to head in, um... It does, um, one of the things, then you can chime in here, one of the things, um, this does do, it's targeting, like Mr. Martino said, um, not necessarily that younger families can't move in, but the target audience here are retirees. And we don't have a lot of single-level, um, living for retirees in this quadrant of the city. We did, as you know, approve the Serenity Hills, which is down in this neck of the woods, but up there, there's a few townhomes, not all of them are single or one level, and so we, we really could use more diversity for our retiring or aging population.
I have a number of comments, first of all, this is way too tight, fourteen houses in here is way too tight, I mean, we're below eleven thousand square feet on these lots. To me, this looks like Red Oak Phase Two, and Red Oak was a disaster, and that's why it's not selling. It's sitting there, it looks awful, and now we're gonna have more, I, it's, I, a bad idea. Second of all, I mean, you know that all those lots in the back that haven't sold along Red Oak, a lot of the reason why they haven't sold is out there's cattails growing in there because there's so much water going down there, if we add more hardcover here, that's gonna make that worse. Uh, there's gonna be sub pumps running all the time, there's already one house over there that sub pump runs all the time. Um, I noticed one of the things we talked about here with the cul-de-sac going away, that the county's proposing then to eliminate access to nineteen and run it down to Grandview. On the flip side, they're asking now to put in a turn lane on nineteen, which I, I agree we would need. It seems really, and this is not really your issue, but it seems really odd to me that the county's saying, okay, let's build this turn lane and put all this infrastructure in, and then, oh, by the way, we're just gonna extender the whole thing later on, um, and I, again, that's probably not so much you, per se, as the applicant, it's more of a county issue, I don't, it seems very odd to me, um, and I, I think, again, the whole, the concept of, it's just too tight. I, I think, I don't know if, especially the first, I look at lots one and five, given two, as they're closer to the County Road nineteen, I think there was a proposal for the turn lanes and then additional right-of-way for, as you mentioned, a bike path or something at some point, which is needed 'cause it's, it's tight in there, um, it, it just looks really tight, and then now we're shaking it even further. The last two lots, oh, those are the biggest lots, um...
So, Mr. Malater, um, so do you like, you like some things about it, but it's a density issue?
It's mainly a density, I mean, we've already slammed fifty-nine houses...
What do you think would work?
Well, I, you know, I obviously, that's gonna be Mr. Martino's decision as to what financially works, but I think if you take out lots one and five, you know, basically make this a twelve-unit development, and allow the other ones to breathe in, make each lots two, three, four, five wider, and then on the, on the south side, make lots one, two, three, four a little bit wider, then all these houses aren't quite piled on top of each other. And you can get, keep away from County Road nineteen a little bit, just from the traffic, 'cause this is, here, this is more traffic. Um, I think that would, that'd be a good start.
Okay, but you like everything else?
No, I don't, I mean, you, you have, I mean, you have, clearly you've got a hardcover issue, I mean, we have eleven thousand square feet lots, and this is all clay...
And that was one of the concerns, the Planning Commission did mention, that they'd like to see him stay within the hardcover, um, allowance and so...
We, we have done that, I, I've done some, I don't finalize it, but I, uh, we, we feel confident that we will stand, we'll stay within the overall average of hardcover allowances that are required in a PUD, so, we've done some basic calculations, of course, we've got a lot more work to do with it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we have, we've seen Red Oak that isn't selling at all, and now we're gonna put more inventory on top of it, and that was...
The only thing with Red Oak is that is a totally different clientele and buyer.
No, no, I, there's, there are single-level homes in Red Oak, there's a model right now that's not, it's the same style as this.
But they're not gearing towards a fifty-five age in Red Oak.
It's, it's still the same, actually, there are people that, some people have bought this.
Some, but this is specifically designed for the retirees.
The house is the same house.
But you're not marketing to them, per se.
Well, they can buy, anybody can buy these houses.
You might be a target market, yeah.
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean, like, as you just mentioned, you know, you're targeting, in your Minnetaka development, older clientele, and who, who shows up? A couple of people younger, people can buy it.
Right.
And these houses are just like the ones in Red Oak, there's a couple of single levels, one's been built and bought by someone who is older that is a single level, and there's another one that's sitting there as a spec home right now, actually, I think, no, it's still a spec home, um, it's a single level. Same size, it's the same thing, uh, and that's one of the spec homes that's sitting there, unsold, I, it just, we're adding a lot of inventory to an area that hasn't sold yet.
Can I make a comment, um, obviously, you're passionate about...
I sat through the Red Oak Development...
I understand that, so did I, and, you know, and obviously, we have Red Oak, and this is in a, a bash session on Red Oak. And quite frankly, um, I, I think that Red Oak is not as bad as we think it is, and, uh, that it's been portrayed, but at the end of the day, I'm not, I wish it was a golf course, I wish we would've kept a golf course there, I wish it was one-acre lots, um, you know, but it's not. And, um, but I'm gonna, but I gotta, uh, suggest to you a couple of things, number one, um, the reason I say fifty, this is not fifty-five, is the categoric, uh, identification of a fifty-five or older neighborhood, I'm not doing that. But I'm building a, um, a model or a prototype that will, in essence, uh, allow retirees to, or people, empty nesters, executives without children, feel comfortable here, but I also am building it in a way where people might say, you know what? I've got, I, I wanna be here in this neighborhood because I like it, it is not the same product as major national big-box builders. That I passionately will debate with you, because it is not, I'm working with, it's no different that in the Cove, that I'm working with a, a custom home builder in the Cove. No disrespect to M.I. or Madamy, that's a different product line, and they separate the two, and, but they do it in a way that they can live together, and they can kind of, they, that, um, they, you know, they, they help, each neighborhood helps each other throughout that, but, you know, I'm hopeful that I can show you that this villa home, um, product that you look, that you look at, Mr. Malater, that is not the same as the Red Oak neighborhood. And then on the Red Oak neighborhood, I don't think that's as unsuccessful as it was for a while, 'cause I think they've really kind of gained some traction there, I watched that pretty close, too.
I, one thing on the Red Oak, um, you know, putting the trail through is, I think, that makes some sense. I, one thing on the Red Oak, you know, putting the trail through is, I think, that makes some sense. But I think the issue we're gonna have with that is those lots, as you well know, are also really tight. And so now we're gonna take two of them and make them even tighter by putting a trail through it.
There is an easement, there's a utility easement. So maybe that would be something they would work around. I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, there's already a utility easement, so maybe they'd work with that, I don't know.
But even with the easement.
Let them figure, I mean, they can look at it.
Well, I mean, it's still gonna be an issue that the houses are spaced such, whether easement, you don't see the easement, obviously, but you're gonna see a trail.
Right.
And so now.
I'm gonna say, that's what I'm saying, though, the lots aren't gonna get smaller.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? In Red Oak, the lot, the two, I don't know.
They can, because there's nowhere to put a house.
Right, exactly.
That's why a lot of them aren't selling, especially for their sound like the park. You know, this puts more load on the park, which, again, wasn't developed in part of Red Oak, which it should've been. There's two lots at the end that should be part of the park. And we're gonna introduce more demand to the park.
The park being Saga Hills?
Yeah, yeah.
Do children go there?
Oh, yeah.
I, I.
I, I can hear. I see him, yeah.
That's good. It's nice to hear children.
I've driven past it a number of times. It's been a while, and I've never seen anybody there.
Oh, no, there's, there's people there. But, I mean, it's gonna get a lot more.
Okay.
But I think the other thing to be concerned about is lots one through six, seven. You know, you're substantially higher elevation. I think you said one through six are gonna be walkouts.
Yes.
Those, at that walkout level, are basically gonna be looking down right in the backyard of the people that do eventually build in the swamp area where Red Oak. You know, if you can keep a lot of trees, I suppose you can preserve some privacy there. But you're gonna have kind of a, an awkward situation where you can basically look right into someone's windows down there from the elevation that you're looking at. But I guess I'll have to decide that, but.
Obviously, I don't like it, but, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can.
Can you explain your, your opposition to the townhome concept? Why, why are you so opposed to that?
I've done them, and I, quite frankly, I think that as much as the villa home creates some type of, if you were looking at it, you might think, well, they look all the same. A townhouse definitely, you're, you're rolling down that path. And quite frankly, I did townhomes in Menetaka. I, I did an adjoining neighborhood by Breckenwood. I was unsuccessful in that. I did high-quality. I did townhomes in Delano, and I was unsuccessful at that. And I just, I feel that, that my, I feel that it is my driving force to create a neighborhood and a concept that aesthetically looks as best it can with this type of housing. And I don't think that's accomplished with townhomes.
The other thing, you know, you talk about maybe sitting there. The, the villa homes, if you wanna call them villa homes, are hot right now. They are a hot, a hot thing in the marketplace today.
I mean, on that topic, though.
So the question, and then the other question is, do we want townhomes here in this area? Is that the right?
Well, we've talked about that.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Okay, we've talked about that on Red Oak, and that part of that probably could've been made better had we done some of that townhomes and spaced out the other homes. That's hence what we just got done talking about with the comp plan, about allowing that. Second of all, to your point about hot market, what we've found in Woodland Cove is that all the townhomes are sold. And so that seems to be even hotter. Because if you wanna build a home, you can build that in Red Oak.
I'm trying to put, push the price up on these. Townhomes in Wood, in Woodland Cove are just, that's a price product that's moving very quickly. I am really not, I am really opposed to that, especially in this area. I just.
If I might just, the third phase that was referenced that Madamie's coming in with, they had seventy-five percent townhomes proposed. They've actually ratcheted that back to fifty percent, and they've added villas. So, yes, they've sold, and they've sold quickly. However, everyone's telling us that the villas, they wanted, they, like I said, they went down to fifty percent. That's what's coming before you in a month or two. They're saying the same thing, they want the villas.
Mr. Martino, I, I like the idea of the villa homes. For this purpose, I'm okay with the smaller yards. Sometimes if, as you get a little older, you don't wanna, a large yard isn't all that important to you, especially if it's your second home. And one of the things that I like about it is in our, the vision that was developed for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It says, "As members age, alternative housing styles should be considered allowing residents to remain in Minatrista throughout their lives while supporting the efforts of seniors to live independently." To Mr. Malater's point, as far as lot number one on County Road 19, there was some discussion as far as if a bike trail might go in there, or they might want it.
There's commentary in the, in the packet about, well, first of all, the turn lane, but also there's a right-of-way for, I believe it said something about a potential bike trail or something.
Well, Hennepin, well, the, the part, I mean, they have plans for where these bike trails are going to be. So we should be able to know if.
If you go to the aerial, Dave, it shows this area here. Do you see this line right here? That actually, I've, I've made, I've, I've designed with that intent that this right-of-way will move in here for a future bike trail.
Is there, the easement, did Red Oak give an easement as well for the trail?
They dedicate more, more land.
And, and I think the nineteen, I think it's a designated county bike trail.
It is, yes.
So they, they would be taking easements as it comes along, I guess, to your point.
Councilman Malater, can I ask you a question?
Just wait, wait, hold on. Ms. Chan, and Ms. Bruce has been waiting, so hold on to that thought.
I have a question for you. I just wanted to ask if, as Mr. Malater was suggesting, if you remove two of those lots, would this still be a viable project for you?
No.
Okay.
Councilman Malater, as, if you had a choice of a walking trail dropping into Red Oak versus going across the backyards of the adjoining property to the south and ending up at the Saga Hill Park, what would be your prefer, preference?
I, I think what you've proposed would be better, to go between the lots and on the Grandview, rather than along the south. Because there's, there's that big retaining wall, I don't know if you're, that's.
There's a what?
There's a big boulder wall that goes on the su, um.
Yes.
I don't know, would you be on the bottom of it or on top of that?
I think on the top of it.
Okay.
There's a barbed wire fence along in there, I think you'd be.
Yeah, that's the other homeowner. No, I think what you've proposed here probably makes more sense, I think, from that.
Not to drop into Red Oak?
No, to do like what you've proposed here.
Well, he has both, he has both.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I like both.
Well, it probably makes sense to plan for both, but I think the one that you'd execute upon doing this would be the one that would go straight to the west.
What's the possibility, and maybe that's a question for you to think about, Dave, of using a grain engine utility easement for, and improving it, even if it were a wood shift? If you blacktopped to the edge of the plat, this plat, and then wood shifted? Can you do that, or is it?
Well, we'd have to look and see. First of all, there's some utilities in, in there that was stubbed to come to yours. So we'd wanna make, you know, verify that, first of all. But that's something we'd have to take a closer look at.
This, again, this is concept plan, so we wanna give them ideas and say, yeah, we like the trail ideas. They have to work out those details. The Planning Commission made a really good recommendation, and I'd like to see this as well. And that is ghost plat, the other, maybe, for, for sure, the next property, if not the other one, to see how this road would connect. And it's called ghost plating, it's done. It's not that that would be written in stone, it's just so that we can visually see how this would connect in the future. And I think that would be helpful, too. So that, that was one of the recommendations of the Planning Commission. And they also recommended that the hardcover be maintained overall. And I don't know if they meant per lot. That's something we'll have to work through, and staff will have to work with the applicant on that.
What's this, so this, this, the previous, the one that we have in our packet, the plots in our packet, there was, actually, you specifically made no mention of wetlands. You said there's no wetland, no mention, but now I see one.
No, that's a stormwater pond.
Okay.
They have to do a stormwater pond.
That's.
Right.
Okay, correct.
And it has to be engineered. This is just for visual, just to see.
Because that's all wooded there, right?
Yes.
I mean, it, who knows, maybe it'll go on the other side. They'll have to engineer it and, and design it. But they have, you were talking about the runoff, so that's one thing that we're gonna have to really take a hard look at in terms of runoff, because we don't want it running off into Red Oak or into other neighboring properties. And that's a requirement.
Mr. Martino, you said, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, Shannon has.
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. You said you're working on another property in Menetaka, similar, a villa is, should we know where that is, so if we wanna drive by and get an idea of how it would look, or?
Just east of world-renowned Snuggies Mall Chalk on Menetaka Boulevard. It's called the Villas of Grohl.
Okay, just east of Snuggies.
Yes.
Okay.
I had one more question. Do you have price targets in mind yet?
I do. We believe that this will start at five hundred thousand. We're targeting five to seven hundred thousand packages.
Okay. I like the addition of the outlook. I saw, I was in the Parks Plan Committee meeting, so I do like what you did there. I think you're right on for what the trend is showing. Baby boomers are growing older, they are, a lot of them are traveling for winter months. They don't want the maintenance of big yards. I think one level is really important for that age group. And, yeah, I think you're right on.
Thank you.
So, Shannon, any comments?
I, I like the villa concept, too. I, I think it's, it's great. I, I do have some concerns about the turn lanes on County Road 19 and how that's gonna, who's gonna pay for what, and.
Well, the city isn't going to.
But it, it does seem sort of silly that.
Obviously, I'm with Councilman Malater. I mean, I think it's ridiculous to, but I'll work with staff and the county.
Yeah, I think, I think the turn lane actually does make sense.
The turn lanes makes, the whole infrastructure did, it made sense.
Yeah, I mean, as it's proposed with the cul-de-sac and the turn lanes, that makes sense. But Phase Two or Phase Twenty, whatever it happens to be, where you take that cul-de-sac out, take the turn lane, that doesn't make sense at all.
Well, that's, I can't imagine that they would take it out. But I, I know, that's what it said, but, yeah.
And if anything, you'd do just the opposite, and you'd take the cul-de-sac out and utilize the current turn lanes.
Right.
Correct. I think, like, Madam Mayor, members of council, we, we all were scratching our heads quite rapidly at reading those comments. Obviously, there's a lot more work to do with them. There's a lot of logistical problems with how, you know, if they, if they were to enforce that, who's gonna do it? And there's, there's so, so many things that, that need to be worked out with that. They know that, that the person who made it or gave us the comment wasn't, it was, there's, there's some other people at the county who have, were suggesting it. So there, there's definitely work to do, and with us and the applicant, and City Engineer will work on that.
Just one other thought. As dictated by the Met Council, we are required to have some higher-density areas. What would the density of this be?
Well, we're in the range, we're, we're right in the range as to what it's currently zoned for right now.
On the low end.
This, in terms of the Met Council, I mean, this, as you pointed out for our comp plan, in terms of the different housing styles and offering that variety, I mean, this certainly meets the intent of that.
Okay, so, save the trees.
Been hogging them.
Work on the trail and go forth. You've kind of got our, you have our comments, you've had the Planning Commission comments, and staff, I think, kinda knows.
One question on the Planning Commission comments, there was one dissenting vote. What was that? We usually try to get.
I don't, no, 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 there wasn't.
Yeah.
There was.
Victory.
Victory. Yeah.
I don't recall that. What was?
Yeah, he did.
Was on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
He felt the density was too much, that it was in excess of, what is that, Red, what was that, Red Oak?
Oh, yes, yes.
I differ with that. I, this, I, I believe that this nets out at two-point-nine-seven. And I'm quite certain that Red Oak was above that. I'm not sure, I didn't do, I didn't do Red Oak. But I will guarantee you, we have a good product here. This will be custom, more of a custom-designed villa home product.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So we have forty, fifteen minutes before we need to take a break? So do we have time for the next item, or should we take a break now?
Is there a neighborhood meeting scheduled for this?
There really isn't a lot of neighborhood. Because there's some.
Well, we did with Red Oak.
Well, there's Red Oak, that's, that's on three sides, and then the one neighbor to the south.
We also go five hundred feet, though, right? We wouldn't notice these things?
I think that would be one neighbor.
Well, it's a few, it's a few more, but it doesn't get to the other side of Red Oak. It'll get a few on West Edge or on.
I mean, just to be consistent, regardless of, if you think two people are gonna show up at two-hundred, I think we should be consistent.
Well, the, the issue is density. We have to have that density regardless. He's on the low end of the density. So the only question is villas versus townhomes.
I don't disagree with that.
Is that, maybe we can, Mr. Abel, can you? The density requirement for this, right now, as he's presenting it, is.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where, what his number is. We've, we've had some back and forth, and I put it like, what it's, I was like, what I have on my slide right here, you have a minimum of two and a maximum of three-point-five. Obviously, he feels very confident he's within that range. I'd, I'd probably agree, he's probably below three-point-five.
He said he's at two-nine-seven.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he could go, he's not at the limit. He could take a lot down here and still make this be within the density requirements. That could still happen.
Okay. I don't know where he's at two, but he said, no, at one, but I said at two, he couldn't make it work.
Two-nine-seven is where he at. He's at two-nine-seven.
No, if he took out two lots, he could not make the development work.
I don't think, okay.
Yeah, I mean, good, good point, as Mr. Vani points out, I mean, technically, the comp plan's three to five.
But the zoning is, is two to three and a half.
But the comp plan's three to five. I mean, he can use that, too.
Right, but I can use two to five, or.
Well, put it this way, I don't think we want it denser. So if the comp plan is three to five, and he's just below three, we don't want it denser.
No, but you can go down to two.
I'm not sure. I don't think you can.
I think you need to meet both.
Yeah. We need to meet both. So, anyway.
I'm just reading it right there. It says a minimum of two units per acre, so.
Correct, and the comp plan guides it for three to five. So, and this'll happen, your comp plan and your zoning district won't exactly match. They have to be within the range, which, which it does meet that. So technically, you wouldn't wanna go, you, you wouldn't be compliant, you wouldn't be compliant with your comp plan if you forced him to go below three units per acre. You'd have a hard time forcing him legally to do that. He'd turn around and say, what?
Well, it was, the point of this was to give him the input, so.
Yeah.
Done.
Okay. All right. Okay, so next, we'll do the, let's see, temporary easement agreements for Halsted Drive.
Yeah.
Yep, ten minutes, or less.
I'll get this done in five.
Okay.
It's like name that. All right, or about ten times. I was gonna say ten times less than the previous item, right? So, yeah, this is on page two oh three of the packet. So I've got good news, and this is why there's all the handouts in front of you tonight. There's A, B, and C that we've copied for you. There's three of them that have came in since, basically, Friday afternoon. And they were working on getting them Saturday, Sunday, even today. So in addition to the three that are in the packet that were for, I got them here, the original ones were, let me just skip ahead here. Got them, it's in the resolution on page two oh five. It was for Mueller and Maxwell and McGowan, right? Yep, so those three, which totaled up to the, I think, the ten thousand twenty-five that was originally referenced, we have the three that are in front of you now that have came in that. total an additional twelve thousand six fifty, so, um, and those were for, uh, you have in front of you, A and E Legacy Holdings and, uh, the, um, Josh and Rebecca Sabaski, and then also, uh, Michael Adar and, um, Henin.
Marsha.
Marsha Henin, yeah. So, those have now all three been signed, and we'd like to add, uh, those for approval, cause those were the last three we needed. So, we had eight approved at the last meeting, and now with these six, we'd have all the temporary easements we would need to do the Halsted Drive project. So, um.
Great.
I guess, yeah. Long story short.
All right.
We've got, uh, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the resolution for those six easement agreements, um.
Well, total of, um, six, seven, eight, nine, right?
Six.
There's three.
Oh, three in the pack, yes.
Three in the packet, yep, yep.
Okay, sorry, sorry, yep.
Um, that totaled, in total now, twenty-two thousand six seventy-five, um. Is there anything? Yeah, we're just basically a, a, adding the three in front of you to the three that are in the packet. So, if we could get a motion to approve those, we would.
So, you need a motion to approve all six, um, let's see, easement agreements for a total of twenty-two six seventy-five?
Well, that's, that's the aggregate, right?
That's the aggregate, yeah, 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 there's six agreements totally, yeah, yeah.
Do you want?
Have you included the eight from last time?
No, no, those are probably approved, yeah, yeah. No, this is the.
That's just for, no, that's for these six.
Yeah, yeah. Correct.
Okay.
Twenty-two, what was it I'm saying?
Twenty-two six seventy-five. Is that correct?
Yes, sorry, yeah.
Okay, and that would be six agreements, the three that are in our packet, plus handout one, two, and three. For, um, Adar and Henin and Sabaski and, um, A and E Legacy Holdings. Questions?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. That was, um, motion made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Thol.
And then just to get, yeah, one last comment. So, with these temporary easement agreements in place, we do have the bid opening for next Tuesday, the thirteenth, and you should see, hopefully, the Halsted Drive, um, award of that project for the June nineteenth meeting.
Correct.
Yay. Yay. Come on, council, be a little more excited. We've been working on this for years. All right.
Just one item to add on that right of way acquisition. That is probably the shortest timeframe to acquire easements I've ever been involved with in my career. So, I've been doing this for thirty years.
Well.
That was a.
We have great citizens. What can I say? Just great citizens.
And I do think, you know.
And a great right of way.
Comparatively, some of the other ones I've been involved with over the last couple of years, um, the right of way agent made a, um, stick.
Yes, he, he was, he was great.
Yeah, Dave Hagan with WSB did, did a really good job.
Excellent job, thank you.
For the property owners.
Thank you very much.
Say with Mr. Hornby and Mr. Grim, they were kinda holding each other's feet to the fire.
Yeah, yeah.
And I watched day of the week it was.
Okay, so now we will take a, a five-minute break and then be back at nine o'clock, okay? So, we, we have to take a break because of changing of the, whatever. What do we change? So, we're on business item D. And that is, um, approving a change order for, um, it's change order number five for the twenty sixteen water system improvements. Um, would this be Paul?
Correct. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Today in your packet is a summary of what change order five is, uh, for the water treatment plants. Uh, there is a list there, um, an exterior lighting change, some fire alarm alerts, uh, through the SCADA system. These were some improvements that were, um, made more when, uh, the, as far as the SCADA improvements, as we improved our SCADA, that could be added to the SCADA systems. We have one set of software to run these items. Some radio communication modifications are necessary, uh, modifications to the well seven pump, uh, labor costs to set the well pump, uh, filter modifications to provide more capacity, uh, chlorine bypass modifications in the South Water plant, adding a portable generator, uh, modification to backflow preventers, and then adding light and fans switches to chlorine rooms. Majority of these items have been in progress for some time. These were a list of things we were hanging on to, and, uh, staff does recommend that, uh, these items be approved. Uh, change order five results in addition to the, up to the contract in the amount of fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. That increases the contract from eight million, uh, twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to eight million seventy-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's about a two and a half percent increase in the contract, uh, overall, uh, for the project. Staff does recommending adopting resolution in your packet ninety-six dash seventeen. Approving the water treatment plant change order five for the two thousand sixteen water mean improvement, or water system improvements. And that's for city project two dash fifteen, and payment for that would occur at a future meeting.
Okay, and I think we had, what, three percent contingency in the budget?
I think three and a half, even.
Three and a half? Did we have three and a half? Okay.
Yeah, it's a little over three hundred thousand.
Okay, so this is two point five, so, okay. So, we still have a little bit more left, if need be, which we might need. Okay, all right.
About change orders.
And we're able to roll those into our, um, PFA loan for our loan officer, so.
Now, with the contractor, though, this should be it then?
Should wrap things up, yeah.
Okay.
We're still working on some things such as, uh, finishing up some punch list items and then also some of the debugging work. By debugging, I mean, making sure all the software and equipment works well together.
But that's included in the contract.
That's included in the contract.
Yeah, okay, so everything else is included, so, all right, thank you. Counsel?
I, I come from the business world, and in the business world, we always get change orders before we pay them or before the work is done. And we've talked about this in the past, and I understand, uh, a project this size, you, you sort of aggregate these all together, and the work has to go on. But I'm wondering if we shouldn't have some kind of a policy, whereas, when, when we have charges like sixteen thousand dollars for something, I'm not sure if this should have been something that was anticipated or not. And I think for, it, it might be a good idea to have a dollar amount that they just automatically come to council if it's over ten thousand dollars or fifteen or whatever that number is. I'd like some more, um, information behind these, so that I know, we can gauge whether it should have been in the spec. Should they have known this was gonna be something that they needed to do? Um, because I'm not comfortable going through all of these and asking the question for each single one. I mean, I can see lighting. Neighbors complained that was unanticipated. Of course, we're gonna approve things like that. But I, I've seen this come up on a number of occasions, and I, I'm just wondering if we can come up with a policy so that we don't continually get these big change orders with big amounts that, um, and it, it, a lot of contractors will lowball a bid and then come in and make it up later with changes.
Well, these, these weren't on, I mean, these items were not on the bid, so it's not that they could lowball it.
These are change orders, but.
Right. Sometimes change orders are maybe, our staff says, hey, this isn't gonna work really good for us, so we would need this or we need that. The problem is, um, as you know, uh, we, we can't say, okay, stop work. We have to go ask the council. Especially like this time, there were three weeks between council meetings, and to stop work and say stop, we have to ask council. But, having said that, um, I don't disagree. What generally we could do is when we have a large project like this, we could give staff authorization up to a certain amount because you don't wanna stop a project, cause that can ultimately cost more.
And I'm, I'm not saying we should stop projects. I understand why they do things the way that they do.
Right.
I would just like to understand as a council, what things should have been anticipated and which aren't.
Okay, well, maybe Mr. Hornby can ask, answer that.
When, big project like this in a short timeframe, which was put together, there, you're, you're going to have, as professional staff, we put together contingencies which you can probably expect in it. And as, uh, Brian had mentioned too, that was about three and a half percent. We're still a percent below that, so we still have some dollars that we're, we're essentially under budget on it. Some of these weren't anticipated by the contractor or the engineer, because there were add-ons that were, um, by staff for one reason or another, such as the fire alarms being in the SCADA system, you know, a backup or a portable generator. Um, those types of things were, and were identified, um, weren't even part of the contract to begin with or a part of the scope for the, for the consultant to consider. For the well seven pump, when you're experiencing drawdowns that, uh, for the groundwater table are not gonna be sustainable over long periods of time, you need to change the pump out. Yeah, those are things, you know, at that time, at the time this was bid, that well was under construction. They're not gonna know that until they, uh, so there's some things in here that are added in that weren't anticipated.
And, and.
For reasons beyond that.
Interrupting, cause I, you, I don't, I don't need a lot of, I don't wanna go line by, line item by line item. And perhaps just some, some more narrative in the list, when it's listed, as to why it was required would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Or.
You want more reading?
Would that be, would that be, um, better accommodated by a phone call to one of the staff, or, you know, by calling Mr. Veroni, and then you say, well, that's really more, uh, and, uh, question that would be answered by Mr. Hornby? And then, uh, where you could get answers to that question before the council meeting where it's up for vote or approval?
Right, then you could, what, what Ms. Thol is saying is then you could get all that information. We can get it too if we want it, but if it's in our packet, then we feel like we have to read all of that and go through all of that as well. And some people want that, want all that information. Um, and some people maybe are more of a, a higher level and say, hey, we've worked with staff, I trust staff, or I understand it. Or maybe they've called staff and asked, so.
And I, when we get two hundred and some pages in our agenda, of course, we don't read every single word. And I think it's, we all have different levels of, of information that we dig into.
Right.
So, I don't see that it's, there's any harm in it being in there. You can just choose to ignore.
Well, it depends on how much time it would take staff to do that too. Um, so, I mean.
Or establish a limit, a, a dollar limit. More change orders that have items over a certain amount.
Mr. Hornby?
Just a, a comment. You know, we do use some common sense when we're approaching these two. If you remember the mill and overlay we had, once we did the initial milling last year, found out, oh, there's a much bigger problem here. We have to come to council and talk about some budgetary changes, and so we did that. Because there was a much larger underlying problem that was realized. Um, on some of the, on some of these projects, now I know this is a big investment for the city, but as a percentage, overall of a project is relatively small. And so, as the staff, we look at those and look at what, you know, in our judgment, what do we feel needs to come to council? If there's questions about some of these things, I certainly don't mind getting questions as far as why, you know, why, why is this being done? So, like, yeah, I know a lot of other cities will have, as part of their work sessions, they'll have a discussion about what's on the agenda coming up and talk about, about what's gonna be there. Some of the larger cities do. I don't know that Minnetrist is in that position to do that, but they kinda have a pre-meeting, so they can talk about all the detailed stuff, and then they have the.
Well, I think.
That might just be more meeting time.
But to Mrs. Bruce, to, to Councilmember Bruce's point, I think what she's saying is, maybe we just have, and typically, it's not uncommon to do this at the beginning of a major project, is to authorize staff X number of dollars or else a certain amount over, a percentage over the, um, contract. And that's certainly something we can do. We're at the end right now, so, and we don't have any big projects coming up, but that's something we can do at the next project. Um, sometimes, eh, eh, the one project that, um, Mr. Hornby mentioned really caused a lot of problems. It was right to come back to the council, but then it caused about a month delay, and we had very upset residents too. So, we have to sometimes weigh things, and then the other question is sometimes on these projects, is it gonna cost us more money? Something that we're gonna do anyway. So, we have to weigh all those things and.
I, I like the idea of giving staff a certain amount that they can negotiate up to.
Yeah, or a percent or something, yeah. So, next project, we'll do that. All right. All right.
One question.
Yeah.
Um, there was some talk about moving a control panel on well seven. Is that?
That's going to be done as part of.
The overall punch list.
It should not have been put where it was, where it was put, so they're gonna move that.
Okay, so that's not a change order specific. That's a punch list item. Okay, thank you.
That's under the contract.
Just clarify, we need to have some pretty clear things around the contract.
Yeah, okay. All right, so is there then a motion to approve the change order for the Water Systems Improvement Project two dash one five in the amount of fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty-nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion as may by Ms. Thol and second by Mr. Maliter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So, next, um, approved conditional offer of employment for Mark Klein for a public works maintenance worker. Ms. Sandra. Taber.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so as mentioned, we are bringing before you a resolution for a conditional offer of employment for Mr. Mark Klein as a public works maintenance worker, and I'm bringing this to you on behalf of our personnel committee. Um, we began this process here, this, this version of the process, to hire a public works maintenance worker back in April. Um, we had six applicants for this, and the city staff decided to interview five. Only four actually came to their interview. We've had a bit of fallout here the last few rounds. Um, the panel interview took place on April twenty-sixth, and I, we actually have three relatively strong candidates, which, as I had mentioned, we've had some rough goes of trying to fill these public works positions, so, um, fortunately and unfortunately, we had three, three strong candidates. So, in considering those applicants, Mr. Mark Klein emerged as the choice for hire. He has significant experience. He has about twenty-five, just over twenty-five years of experience with large equipment operation, paving, blacktop, snowplow, water-related work, including pump repair, which is a big deal for us. It was done in the private sector, but very good carryover, we're hopeful of. He has an extensive customer service background as well. Um, the final steps for this process included a complete review of his driving record and criminal history. Those have been performed by the PD. Uh, reference checks have been completed, and Mark's physical is scheduled. He also has drug testing with that, and that's the final step to be completed. Uh, the Personnel Committee met on May nineteenth to discuss Mark Klein specifically, and then, um, we did chat a bit about the other candidates that we had, and just the strength that we saw in those candidates as well. So, we are making a recommendation in the Personnel Committee for Mr. Mark Klein with the terms of employment offered as outlined in the attached conditional offer. Um, and we're looking forward to Mark hopefully starting here in late June. That would be the goal.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, they do have a question, um, just in general about, you know, we've done a few hiring things. By the time it comes to us as a full council, um, I know you've done all the interviews, of course, um, but sitting here as a council member, I'm being asked to approve this. I don't know this guy from the street, and I've done a lot of hiring decisions in the private sector. At least I get to look at a resume. Uh, or could we, going forward on employment applications like this, at least see a resume of a person or an application or something, so I've got a little bit to go on? That would, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, and I would defer to my guest a pre-pat.
The only thing that we'll have to do is just like you see in the offer letter, there's. Redline the address, yeah. Yeah, there's gonna be some things we'll take off, but most of our applications are set up, so there's no private data on it except for. Sure.
And obviously, you wouldn't wanna share that with the public, though. That's the only issue, because sometimes when they apply, they have other jobs. They may not want their current employer to know, so I'm not sure how we would handle that.
That's the thorny part. Well, I mean, we, I, we just got an email today about, you know, information for the session that could be emailed rather than put on the website.
Um, Ms., um.
One idea is like, we, we send you the informational packet. That only goes to council.
Right.
So, we could do this in that same sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, it's just still public information, see, and. Okay, I just, it's just still public information, see? And that's, that's the issue. As long as you send it to us via email in whatever form, it's still public information, and anybody can get it.
Not if we put confidential in the...
I don't know.
I, I, I understand the, the interest in getting some more information. Let's let staff work on it. We're cognizant of the fact that there are data practices, restrictions on stuff, which we all need to recognize. And so we'll try to accommodate that, recognizing, though, that we have to be careful about what we distribute.
Thank you. Just FYI, so this isn't a rash and quick decision. So first of all, no, no, I'll, I'll just explain the process, because I think, you may not know. So first, an application is received, or a resume is received, they're reviewed by staff, by both the HR, as well as most of the time by, most, all of the time, I think, by Mr. Veroni. And then they're weeded out, and then they're, they're invited in for an interview. Usually the interview is with Ms. Cassandra Taber and with Mike Veroni, and in this case, with our public works director. And once they interview them, then they weed them out, and then they go through a process of the background check and all of that that you saw in your packet. So, and in addition to that, the personnel committee meets. So the personnel committee is myself, Ms. Thol, Cassandra, Taber, and Mike Veroni, sometimes Brian, Brian, too, because he needs to give us input on, on the financial part of it. So there again, we have yet another level or another, yeah, level of vetting out the good and bad. And then it's brought to council. So it's, there's a number of layers and a whole lot of steps that an applicant has to go through. It's not just one or two. It's, it's a lot of, lot of steps that they go through. Usually, what we would do if it's a, if it were like Mr. Veroni's job, or, you know, something like that, then we would actually have the council, the entire council be involved in, in the process, so. Just so you know.
I, I understand the process, but nonetheless, you're asking me to approve somebody who I know. You, you know a lot more of this person than I do.
Right.
So, but we're all sitting here together, and we're going to vote on this, all five of us.
And that's why we're gonna...
You have a lot more information than I do.
And that's why we're going to try and get you that information.
That's my point.
Yeah, so. But we have to be careful.
I understand.
All right, all right.
Just a quick question. Where does he live?
It's, it's redacted.
He lives...
You can't legally ask. Yeah, yeah. You can't legally ask.
Minnesota.
And you can't, and you can't ask his age or race or religious affiliation and stuff.
No, there was somebody that we did come across that lived far away. So that's why I asked the question, because I know we did have that information.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, sometimes, yeah. So anyway, so are you comfortable approving this?
I am. I just would ask, going forward, we change our practice a little.
Okay, all right. So with that, a resolution, I'm looking for a resolution to approve the conditional offer of employment for Mark Klein as a public work maintenance worker with our city. So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to administrative items, staff reports. We'll start with Mr. Veroni.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I've got a few items to review, and I'm actually adding the city attorney to speak at the end. So there's four of us from staff that will be talking. I don't know if Chief Falls wants to talk about, but we did have the emergency management training with both the St. Bonnie Council and the Minnetrista Council on, on May twenty-fourth. I thought that was very well done by Chief Falls. The water cleaning, water tower cleanings are completed, and they're actually starting, I believe, tomorrow. The process to clean water mains, they're going to go bouncing back and forth between the, the two water tower sites and work from there. There's a lot more information on the city website if you want to see their schedule, but we've been notifying people and asking people to, you know, are signing up for it, they'll be receiving this information as well. I did want to mention again that Joni Sandquist, our longtime administrative aide and deputy city clerk, is retiring on July eighteenth. And so we actually have a council meeting the night before on the seventeenth, so there'll be a recognition for Joni that night. We did have our mediation a few weeks ago with Knutson, and we'll be holding a closed session on the June nineteenth city council meeting to discuss the details of that. Present from the city were myself, Mayor Whalen, council member Molitor, and then our attorney with Kenny Graebman, and then the engineer from SEH, Mr. Larson. So we'll be giving you the details. I tried to share some of that with you in your, our phone calls this morning, but we'll be going into closed sessions and hopefully approve that final agreement. I think it's, it's a fair agreement for both sides. And with that, I will let, I believe Cassandra has a reminder, and then we'll move on, down the list here.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the water tower cleaning, I think part of that cleaning, we're doing an inspection as well?
Yeah, and the, Mr. Hornby could talk about that, but it, it was, we got really, the, the tower's in really good shape.
Yeah, they're going to have some minor recommendations, both interior and exterior to do repairs, but that's something, once we get their report, then we'll be able to add that to the CIP.
Yeah, but nothing too substantial. Not really. I think there's one that's probably going to be, need to be painted in the next three years, four years, something that...
Yeah, there's one that's going to be painted. There's some things that we have a agitator in the tank, keep the water moving in the winter, so it doesn't become a big popsicle. Those we need to replace, for the most part. They're outdated and they're no longer allowed. So I believe both of those have been taken out and, you know...
Place with new methodology is going to...
Correct, yeah.
Is that in the King's Point?
Both of them.
Oh, both of them, okay.
One of them was kind of water tower assisted, because it was actually sitting on the bottom of the tank, so it wasn't really working.
Okay. Well, good news. All right. Ms. Taber, are any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to put out a reminder, since so many of our residents will be watching this on YouTube, but our bus tour is this coming Tuesday, June thirteenth. It's from six to nine. We'll start loading at five forty-five. We will take reservations up through six o'clock that day when we load the bus, pending space. We have had some questions and been reached out to by the paper as well, just clarifying if people did this last year, is this still of value to them? And my answer to that was most definitely. Our speaker from the Historical Society was with us last year, so she'll be sharing some things that might sound familiar from last year, but also some new things. Same thing with our speaker from Three Rivers. And then we do have a lot that's happened in the way of developments in our water treatment plant. So there's definitely, will be a lot for people to see, whether they're new to this tour or whether they're visiting us again from last year. So just inviting everyone to get their reservations in so we can plan accordingly, and we're looking forward to another good year.
And it'll be fun.
Very fun.
So if you didn't do it, I saw your name on the list, so hopefully you'll have, you'll have a good time. I know everybody that comes has a good time, so. Okay? Mr.?
Chief Falls.
Chief, Chief Falls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick update here for you regarding the TZD Traffic Safety Program, or otherwise known as Toward Zero Depth Traffic Safety Program. That's formerly was the Safe and Sober Program. As you know, we participated in this program for years and years. It's, it's changed a little bit over the years, but nonetheless, it's still proving to be very effective. And so I guess just a little bit of background for those of you that probably aren't as familiar with this. We're part of a group in Hennepin County with eight other agencies, and they are Southlake, Minnetoka, Medina, West Hennepin, Deep Haven, Rogers, Dayton, Corcoran, and Orno. So we typically work together. Throughout the course of a year, there's several waves of enforcement, if you will. And on May twenty-fifth, we hosted here in Minnetrista and St. Bonnie, our jurisdiction, a high-visibility event. And so what that means is, we work with officers from all of those agencies come to our city. And this particular focus this last time on the twenty-fifth was seatbelt enforcement. And so while seatbelt usage is certainly up dramatically over years ago, it's still an issue. And so on that date, we made forty-six traffic stops in our jurisdiction. We issued thirty-two citations and eighteen warnings. The second part of that event that day was a countywide enforcement for impaired driving. So we had two officers assigned to that detail, and we worked with seventeen, well, our two officers and nineteen other officers countywide. And as a result of that phase, we made one felony narcotics arrest. There were a hundred and seventy traffic stops total. Eleven of those ended up resulting in an arrest. Seventeen people were arrested for DWI. Thirteen people were cited for driving after either suspension, revocation, or cancellation, and nine vehicles were towed. Eleven people were arrested for warrants, so not necessarily a traffic offense, but they had outstanding warrants. And one vehicle was forfeited. So as a result of that, our roadways were certainly made safer, and people were held accountable for, for things that had gone unresolved, so.
Were any of those arrests in Minnetrista?
No, the, the countywide arrests were in Hennepin County. So during the daytime, the seatbelt enforcement was just in our area or jurisdiction, which is both St. Bonnie and Minnetrista. We try to divide our time between the two. And then the countywide, you can essentially go anywhere in Hennepin County. We, we tend to stick to the southwest portion. Certainly, our officers are a lot more familiar with these areas than, for example, for us to drive up to Brooklyn Park would be completely unfamiliar. So it's kind of counterproductive, if you will. But, so, it was a very successful event, and for time's sake, I won't go into a whole bunch of statistical data, maybe at a future work session or something, I'd be happy to share some of the statistical data. But this program works. It does keep our roads much safer, and the trend is showing that it is making a difference, so.
Well, thank you. Good, good job. Any comments or questions?
I just have one question. On your information sheet, Paul, you had added an online submission highlight reel. It was on the last page.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, okay. Thank you. This was so nice to read. You know, this, the positive comments.
Yeah.
I enjoyed that, so thank you. You haven't done that before.
No, and just so people are aware, so with our new website, we opened up the ability for people to just do a comment of any sort. And so every morning, usually in the afternoon too, because people are very much utilizing this resource, I go through those, and then I send them out to the appropriate department for those to be acted upon. And we've just had a couple just, "Hey, you're great" comments. We need nothing else from you, just keep doing what you're doing. So I thought that was nice, too. I'll, I'll throw those in in the future, too.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's great. Okay.
And Mr. Beatty has one comment.
Mr. Beatty.
Very, council, very quickly, in the last few days of the regular session, a bill was adopted and signed subsequently by the governor, so it's effective, will be effective August first. The bill requires that cities post ten days in advance of...
Ordinances.
Yes, any ordinance that the city is considering, that it be posted ten days in advance of the expected date of final passage. Since we're a statutory city and we don't have first and second reading, it probably means whenever it's scheduled for the council to consider. It, you can post it electronically, which is what we'll do, because that's how we do these things. If not, you post it on your bulletin board, or, or however you do that. It does, failure to do so does not invalidate the ordinance. So we'll just have to get used to it. But it is going to add an additional step. There's some other requirements we have to. Anyone who wants to sign up for notification will have to get the, or copies of the ordinance to them. Anyone who comes in for a business license has to be informed about the possibility of signing up for this. I think the practical effect is going to be, in some cases, delaying adoption. For example, simple things like rezonings are ordinances that we have, we have occasionally brought them out of the planning commission and sent them directly to the city council at the next meeting. You're not going to be able to do that that quickly unless you take the risk that the ordinance that you post ten days in advance is the same one that the planning commission adopts. So I think there is going to be some delay.
But it's going to take even longer then, because you first have to bring it to city council. They have to discuss it. They have to agree on it. Then you have to post it ten days in advance. Then you have to come back, and then you have to approve it.
Well, I'm certainly not defending this, this statute. I, you know, the, to me, the principal problem that I can see is, this does not call for public hearings for ordinances. And as a council knows, most ordinances do not require public hearings. And the, and the most common form of ordinance that does is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, with either a text amendment or a map change. In those cases, the public hearing is held before the planning commission, not before the council. So there are relatively few ordinances that come to the council that require a public hearing. This does not require a public hearing, but in my opinion, when you start publishing notices that say the council is going to consider X at the following meeting, I think there's an implication that people have, are being invited to the council meeting to discuss the ordinance. And I can certainly see people showing up, thinking that they will have the right to speak on ordinances for which there is no public hearing. So...
I mean, fortunately, yeah. Fortunately, since I've been here anyway, we've always allowed the public to speak if they're here. So, I mean, that won't change. We will, we would always do that, you know, get their input. But it's, yeah, it's, it's just another, I don't know, reaching down to, to the municipal level telling us how we, what we can and can't do by the state. And that's, yeah.
I have a question. Um, Mr. Beatty, you said that it doesn't invalidate the ordinance if we don't post it ten days in advance?
That's correct.
So what is the consequence to the city if we don't?
Well, I, I think that's a good question. The League of Minnesota Cities oppose this for the reasons that I think both the mayor and I are articulating. It won't have any practical legal effect, I suppose, unless cities blatantly start doing this. So maybe the legislature will change that. I suppose it could subject cities to criticism. My suggestion is, even though I see problems with this as a practical matter, I think the city should comply with it, because it's a state law. And if we don't, I think you would be subjected to legitimate criticism that you were ignoring the statute. Interestingly, the, the one type of ordinance it does not apply to are interim ordinances, in other words, moratoria. And if I had to make a public policy argument as to what type of ordinance might legitimately be the subject of some sort of notice requirement, it would be interim ordinances. And that's the one that is, is explicitly exempted from this. So I don't know where this came from. I don't know what's going to happen. I think we'll all get used to it. As the mayor said, we traditionally, in most small cities, traditionally allow people to speak. I just think there's a good possibility that more people will think that they're being invited to a council meeting to speak on an ordinance that they might not otherwise have shown up for.
Okay.
We'll see.
Let's see. Yeah, yeah. And again, it's, it's more public input, which is fine. It's just, it's a timing issue that, that I'm a little more concerned about. Public input not, but that's, that's great. But it's the timing issue. So it, it may delay things for quite a while. But, okay. Any other staff reports?
We're done.
All right. Start at that end with council reports.
Um, I attended the St. Bonnie Fire Advisory Board. And the only thing, it was a very short meeting. It lasted maybe twenty minutes, because the fire chief wasn't there, so I'll keep it short. I did want to note that on the, um, meeting agenda, I think it still shows Councilmember Molitor.
And we notified him. So we'll notify him again, but...
No, no, on our agenda. It just needs to change.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're so worried about St. Bonnie signing it to the wrong person. I guess we got to make sure. Take our own advice.
I will. They'll be taking care of it next time.
At least you got notified from St. Bonnie. That was...
At least you got notified from St. Bonnie, that was hot.
Mr. Molitor?
I attended the last LMCD meeting. Basically, it was a, a public hearing on a, on the Bayview Event Center dock license. Obviously, not a lot of impact to us as a city, but a very contentious issue. So that public hearing was open but not closed. We will be picking up the matter again at the next meeting.
Fun.
Oh, it is a lot of fun. Wow.
Okay.
Um, I attended the emergency training meeting. I thought it was excellent. Thank you, Paul. And it is very nice to know that our city is going to be so well taken care of because we have such a well-trained staff. Let's see. Trista Day, I just really wanna make a call out and thank Cassandra and Amy over at the police department because they did a lot of work at police, their pig races, and I really do appreciate it, so thank you. Good news, the pigs are already training for two thousand.
Hopefully not. We want the little ones.
The WCC meeting is gonna be this week in the evening at Carbone's. And I am going on the bus tour again, because it was so much fun.
It was a lot of fun, yeah.
Okay. I attended the emergency training, very nicely done. Also an opportunity to meet a few of the elected officials or staff from St. Bonnie, so that was nice. And stopped by Trista Day and gave a little moral support to the staff and whoever else was there in the rain.
The weather that we had, they needed it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, was the personnel meeting since the last?
Yep, yep, on the nineteenth, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Falls, for that emergency management training session. I think all of us were there except one individual. You had another conflict. But a great opportunity to get to know the, the, the program and the plan and also, like you said, other council members from St. Bonnie, but you did a great job. We learned a lot and it was very applicable to our, to our city. So we'll have to do some more of that kind of stuff. Anyway, and then Personnel Committee meeting, I attended that. I was here at Trista Day. I don't know how much support I gave, but it was cold and it was rainy and, and, yeah. So hopefully next year it'll be better. I did attend the planning commission meeting. I won't go over that. And then also, I attended, I'm going on the bus tour. I'm gonna be one of the tour guides. And then I also, I will be attending the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, which is next, next week. So that's about it. I'm done. So this is the best time of the night. And?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Thank you.